Welcome everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code, Section 54953, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, Series Resolution Number 2022-106, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via the application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Welcome everyone to our regular City Council meeting today, Monday, September 26th. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District 1, Councilmember Casey.
Here.
District 2 vacant. District 4, Councilmember Klein.
Here.
District 3, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. We have invocation by Pastor Jim Stoci, which is on Zoom. Are you there, sir? Everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am here.
Welcome.
Thanks for inviting me. Let's pray. God, thank you for your many blessings to us for cooler weather and school starting and fall sports and a good harvest and our community. Bless our elected leaders tonight with wisdom and courage and compassion. Bless all who participate in this meeting and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome, everyone. Today, we're going to start off with three presentations, starting off with the Crosstown Showdown Football Game. Today, we have Dan, and if I mess up your name, my apologies, Dan Pandigrazio, Assistant Superintendent Student Support Services Division, Series Unified School District, Greg Magny, Athletic Director for Central Valley High School, John Bessar, Athletic Director of Series High School, Brett Johnston, Head Football Coach, Series High School, Series High School Varsity Football Team, Mike Borges, President of the Series Lions Club. We had a Crosstown Showdown Parade several weeks ago, and the outcome was that Series High won. So what I wanted to do, and the City Council as well, is by presenting to you some certificates of appreciation that we really do appreciate you giving back to the community. So if all those persons who I just named could please stand to the podium, I do have some certificates for everyone. Dan, thank you for your time and effort in coordinating the first annual 2022 Crosstown Showdown between Series High School and Central Valley High School. Your commitment to the students and community are very appreciated, and I know the city liaison was also Christopher Home, who participated in that. And I'm going to go over the certificates and then I'll go ahead and hand them to you and then you can all speak. Greg Magny, Athletic Director of Central Valley High School, thank you for your time and effort in coordinating the first annual 2022 Crosstown Showdown between Series High School and Central Valley High School. Your commitment to the students and community are very accepted. It seems like they're all going to say the same. So I also wanted to mention that the John Bessar, Athletic Director of Series High is here. A quick question, is any of your students here today?
No, we had, they're still at practice right now, but Coach Johnson just stepped away from practice.
We do have one certificate for the entire team as well. Brett Johnston, Head Coach of the Football Team for Series High School, thank you for being here. Series High School Varsity Football Team for the Crosstown, and also not to mention the Series Lions Club, who helps cook all the hot dogs and they were delicious. So thank you very much for the Lions Club always showing up when we really need you. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and present these certificates to everyone standing up there, and if you guys have a couple words to say, that'd be great.
Yeah, we would just like to say we're honored. We'd like to thank the City Council, we'd like to thank Christopher Home. I worked closely with Christopher throughout and many individuals affiliated with the city to pull the event off. It was a great event for the kids. Everybody loved it. So we were just really excited about the result. Lots of great feedback. I just want to thank Lions Club for stepping up with kind of a short timeframe and feeding everybody. And then also just our staff, our coaches, ADs, and our staff. A lot of people came out to help from Series Unified, as well as from the city and from emergency services. So it definitely was a team effort. So thank you to you all. It was a great benefit to the kids and that's what it's all about. So, thank you.
I just want to thank the city for all the attention that this brought. If anybody was at the game, the crowd was spectacular, and I think a lot of that had to do with the, you know, the social media push and the parade and the attention to the game. The other thing I also like to point out is, you know, myself and Greg Magny have worked very hard for a lot of years to, you know, kind of make it more of a friendly inner-city rivalry instead of a very hated rivalry. And with all the attention that it brought and the crowd size of what, everything went smoothly. And, you know, the game has been a great game for the last two years. A year before last, Central Valley beat us by two. We beat them by one this year. So we really appreciate all the focus that it's brought to this game, and thank you again.
Yeah, just echoing some of John's thoughts, just thank you to everyone involved. It was an amazing event. Although we lost, it was a great game. It really was. It came down to a two-point conversion. We went for it, went for the win, and Series, they made a great play. They tipped it out of our receivers' hands for the victory. So it doesn't get closer than that. It's become one of the better rivalry games in the area in terms of competitiveness. As you heard, the last two have come down to literally the last play of the game. It's great for our kids, great for our community. So congratulations to Series. Believe it or not, when we don't play each other, we do root for each other. We are very close friends. So good luck to the Bulldogs the rest of the way, and of course to my Hawks as well. So thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If any council members have any comments?
You know, I'd like to make a comment. You know, being a third-generation graduate from Series High School, and my children were the fourth generation to graduate from Series High School. I also have ties at Central Valley High School with coaches. At one time, there was a teacher there that was my niece. I'd like to thank the school district, you know, for bringing this together, to doing what you've done. Hopefully, this will be an annual event, and, you know, it was a joy to be there to see the turnout. It brings back memories of homecoming parade used to go down Whitmore years ago. And as a past president from Series Lions Club, you know, I want to thank our current president for helping put this together as quickly as you did. You know, the notice and getting the barbecue and everybody together. It was fantastic, and the turnout was great. And I just hope that, and I look forward to many years of this, bringing the community together with both school districts. And so I thank you, gentlemen, and like the Lions Club would say, we're here to serve. So thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. The next presentation that we have is a Golden Valley Health Center's 50th Anniversary Proclamation. Here to receive the proclamation is Tony Weber, the CEO, Amy Carroll, Chief of Communications, why am I always messing up your name? I'm so sorry, Director of Governments and Community Affairs. So I would like, if everyone will please step up to the podium, please, and I will go ahead and begin with the proclamation. "In recognition of Golden Valley's Healthcare Center 50th Anniversary, Golden Valley Health Centers began serving the Central Valley in the city of Merced in 1972. And whereas Golden Valley Health Center's team of doctors, dentists, behavioral health counselors, and other medical professionals and their teams are committed to providing quality healthcare services regardless of language, financial, or cultural barriers. And whereas Golden Valley Health Center is a federally qualified health center that provides medical, dental, behavioral health and specialties to over 150,000 patients in Merced, San Isla, and San Joaquin County at their 45 locations. And whereas Golden Valley Health Center has been certified as an advocacy center of excellence by the National Association of Community Health Centers, which is a community health center that creates a culture of advocacy to ensure that policymakers at all levels of government commit to investing in affordable, equitable, and innovative care that health center provides. And whereas Golden Valley Healthcare Center is celebrating their 50th anniversary in 2022. I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, Councilmember Jim Casey, and Mike Klein, do hereby recognize Golden Valley Health Center's 50th Anniversary and encourage all citizens of Series to join me in this worthy observance." And I will go ahead and give this to you if you have something to say.
Thank you, Mayor Lopez, and to the City Council. You said it all, 50 years, you know, it's easy to say, but there's a lot that has gone through, and we're very happy and proud to have three health centers here in the city of Series. And with us is also joining us our regional medical doctor, Dr. Daniel Deep, our Chief of Operations, Melinda Marshall, and also our Director of Operations, Lorena Carrillo Salazar. So thank you so much for this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And we move on to our third and final proclamation. In receiving this will be Nelson Gomez, President of the South Modesto Business United. Mr. Nelson, please step up to the podium. Yes, sir. This proclamation is for Hispanic Heritage Month, declaring September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas throughout the history of Series, people have come from all parts of the globe to call this community home, creating a diverse population that enriches our community. And whereas Hispanic and Latinos residents of Series have a profound and positive influence on the community, enhancing and shaping the local character with traditions that reflect their multi-ethnic and multicultural background. And Hispanics Heritage Month celebrates this history, cultures, and contributions of residents whose ancestors are indigenous to the North America, as well as Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. Whereas Hispanics and Latinos residents of Series strengthen the community and bring promise to the future through their significant cultural, social, economic, and charitable contributions. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Week began in 1968 under President Johnston and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period beginning from September 15th. And whereas the city of Series recognizes the significance of all Hispanics and Latino residents and commemorates Hispanic Heritage Month, giving everyone an opportunity to take pride in these roots and to help promote the rich diversity these cultures have to offer. Now therefore, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Severa, Councilmember Jim Casey, and Mike Klein, do hereby proclaim September 15th through September through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Series.
Mayor Lopez and City Council members, on behalf of South Modesto Business United, I am honored to receive this particular proclamation, city of Series, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Nelson, for your contributions and South Modesto Business United as a whole. But now we will move on to citizens' communication. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes, Resolution Number 2007-106, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside of the chamber's doors. We will begin with the yellow cards that I received. Public comment is now open. The first member to come up and speak is Mr. Warren. If you can please come up to the podium and state your name.
Good evening, councilmembers. John Warren, City of Series. I'm sure you had some other speakers waiting to pick me for the first one. Thank you very much. My purpose in speaking tonight, I'm not going to, but earlier today, I sent all of you gentlemen on the City Council, some staff members, an email regarding a situation that had come up, and I wanted to come and thank you all for your expeditious response. The problem was taken care of almost immediately, and my neighbor thanked you very much for doing that. A lot of times when people come to the council with problems, we never hear a thank you. And I think it's very important that when good things do occur in our city, that the proper thank yous are in order. So thank you very much.
Mr. Warren, thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mike Angelo. Welcome, Mike.
You're welcome. I'm Mike Angelo, District 3. I'm in the East Gate community. And my purpose here is to also thank the city for responding to, on the subject of our tree growth and taking care of our beautification areas on and around the East Gate District 3 area. They did a wonderful job. The speed sign there held back some of those young speedsters at bay. They saw that, and they kind of got the message. However, the kids are still a little leery on playing on the sidewalks. That'll probably come in time. But thank you very much for your core, your immediate action and all the cooperation from your contractors. They also cleaned up their mess in a timely manner, so we didn't have that much mess to clean up. They did an outstanding job, whoever those contractors are, their high-speed, low-drag folks, and they cleaned up their mess real well. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate your comments. Is there any other persons in the dais that would like to step up to the podium and make a public comment? Go ahead, please state your name.
My name is Eric Domin. I live in the East Gate area. All I want to say is, the people who making this police neighborhood watch, I like know who's in charge of that, and why are they making the neighborhood watch when they should let everybody know who's in charge of that? Because when you got to understand, we have a park now, so the people go come in and park in front of their houses. Like this morning, three houses or seven houses away, I parked my car, going walk around the block, exercise. Neighbor comes out, he say, "What you doing?" Say, "I'm going to exercise." It was like, "No, you cannot park in front of my house." So all I know is, maybe somebody can educate them better. These don't come inside your house and say, "Why are you parking on the front of my house?" It's the same street. I leave one, two, three, four, different areas. I think 4th Street connected with, what you call that, the rest of the street. So the neighbors, right away, they call in the officer. He told me he can call the police. I said, "What are you going to call them for? You can come over here." I go in, get his five minutes, and figure out why the DMV made a mistake. I get driver license for parking on the street. Well, I wake up in the morning, drive my car over here, park them, walk around the block. So I believe he never study American history. So he can come in, we can discuss this about the city street, long you get driver license, pretty sure you okay. That is all I like saying, and hopefully he can watch me. Guy who live over there by East Gate, see, they getting nervous. They say, "Oh, I see somebody walking on the street." Yeah, because each road is open now. Our new, brand-new Walmart, a lot of people going to be coming. There are people who's in a house, and they see somebody outside, and they say, "Oh, I see somebody outside." I'm going to call the police. They don't need to do that, because the police get other things to do. Besides, come over there and say, "Don't worry, he just, he live here too. He never see me." Sure, because California is very large. That is all I got to say. So hopefully guys learn about the DMV. There's a book never change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there any other members of the public that would like to come up and comment?
Good evening, Mayor Lopez. Debbie Martinez from where La Raza Parents Union. I support the community. I also support parents. And tonight, giving recognition to Series Unified School District is very well-deserved. I'm in 26 districts, three counties, and some of you on the panel know me. And Series is the only series that rises to the occasion to work with community, work with families. And I also want to thank the officers and the big service on this side of the panel for your services. And I also want to thank Officer Rick Collins, because whenever I'm in need, on behalf of community and parents, his door is always open. And I just want to publicly thank you for that, Rick.
Thank you very much. Is there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment?
Hi, my name is Maria Camarena, and I'm here to represent Erica Garcia Lopez, the missing Series woman. I'm just here to clarify that her case is still under investigation. There is no suspect. I know there's been going a lot of things, messages, posts, social media, but I just wanted to clarify that she was found. And also, I'm here asking to have an appointment with Chief of, the Series Chief of Police, Officer Chandler, because, like I said, I'm here to represent the family and the two children that were left behind. We just feel that we were not taken as serious as we should have been. We feel that we were ignored. We feel that there was too much time left without, you know, that we just feel like we were not. There could have been a better outcome if they would have taken us much serer- serious than they did. And I am asking the Series Police Chief if he would consider to schedule, you know, with the family to talk to us, to let us know, you know, from the moment we reported her missing, the time she was found. And every single time, we were in contact with the police department that was many, many times, through messages, emails. We have messages that were never responded to us. Why is it that we were never responded? Why is it that every time we came to the police department, every police officer was unaware of what was going on? I thought as a community, we work together. I thought as a community, you're here to serve us. I don't want my friends lost to just be another body found. We need to address this, because I don't want another call like this to be taken, just like a missing person that is going to be found in a few hours or is going to come home in a few hours, because that's not what happened with her. And I'm just here to see if you would grant us that time of yours in private with the family.
Chief, before you answer that question, what was your name again? I'm sorry. You're representing the family?
Yes, I am.
I just wanted to say that I understand this is very difficult for you to do, to come up here and talk to the City Council for the first time. And I know that you're looking for answers, and you guys want to be heard. The entire family, everybody wants to be heard. And I think we all know, as well as you know, this is an open matter between the city of Series and Modesto. I just want you to know that I care, and that we care. So I just wanted to express those comments to you and the family and everybody here today. Chief, if you want to respond, you're welcome to respond.
Yes, ma'am. I would be happy to meet with you and your family representatives when the investigation concludes. Right now, that would not be the appropriate time to do that, but my door is open to you when the time is correct.
Okay, so we have to wait until the investigation is completed, so you can speak to us?
Right now, that would impede the investigation. I think that's a pertinent thing to do. What I can do is reach out to Modesto and see if they would be okay with me meeting with you. If they give me the nod to do that, I'll open the door tomorrow.
Okay. I would appreciate if you get in contact with them and give us a call, or the family's been in touch through emails. We've been coming into the police station. We were there this morning, and we weren't able to get anywhere, so.
Thank you very much. Is there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment? Rosa?
Hi, Rosalind De Vera. Just wanted to reach out, because I know there's been a lot of stuff going on in Series, and it's a little scary for me. I recently saw the adult that was fighting with the youth at Central Valley. I also heard about the drug overdose at Central Valley High School last week with one of the teenagers. And then I'm also starting to see more gang activity in town. So I don't know what steps we can do as a community to try to get our police force up, so Officer Collins can't get that street team up to try to get the crime back down, try to get some of our gang violence that we're seeing the gang activity again. I see them hanging out at Strawberry Fields Park. They're throwing gang signs over at us when we're walking into our stuff, and I'm just like, really? Like, we got rid of this a few years ago, when it happened about 15 years ago, with the Street Crime Unit. I'm just want to be here to express that we definitely want to get our police force back up. We want to make sure they're responding to these calls, especially, and if we can try to get some of our youth activities up, so that way they're not reaching out to turning towards drugs or turning towards other things at this high school and going into violence or gangs or other activities. We definitely want to try to bring maybe the Youth Commission, which I've reached out. I already expressed my feelings in trying to bring that back to Series, so we can bring some positive activities for our youth as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Any hands on Zoom? Do you have your hand up there? Please step up to the podium.
Council, so they can briefly look at it. Oh, thanks, Joey. Genically, Series. Looking at the latest figures on expenditures, or I believe the last month of for the city of Series expenditures for everything. And again, we go to looking at parks and all the vandalism that continues. It goes on and on and on. And I realize that the city's looking into select parks or areas in the city to place cameras to hopefully catch some of these people. My question is, has anybody ever been caught doing vandalism to any part of city property at any time? And if so, what's the consequences and the fine? We have a fine now presently for 4th of July, which is usually the days before and the days after, and now it's up to $2,500. I don't know if there's and/or jail time for that. I can't remember. But when these people are vandalizing our city, there should be some consequences, and I don't know what they are. I hope it's some kind of community service or and/or a fine or both. And that's just an ongoing thing, you know. And that's just an ongoing thing, you know? I think the last time I asked, it was more than $5,000 a month times twelve we're spending on vandalism around the city. And it's just, evidently, it's out of hand. And I'd like the community to find and get some answers on what we're gonna do about it and what the punishment is for this thing. Some of these people are probably young adults. I understand that. We all were, but things have changed nowadays and a lot of kids do more than what we probably did, what we thought was fun. Now it's very costly for individuals and communities like the one we live in. And the pictures that they had a hard time getting printed out a short time was from a violation on Blaker Road. And if you can see that picture, these two little pictures, that vehicle was placed on the city sidewalk. If you look at it very closely, there's like, you can't see the front right tire, but it's blown out too. It's on the sidewalk. It was called in, I believe, on let's see if I can get the right date here, the fourteenth of September. The vehicle is gone now, but code enforcement got back and said that the violation, they served to put something on the vehicle for California Vehicle Code 22669D. That's called a public hazard. And there's stipulations in there about if it can't be moved, the equipment on it causes it can't be moved. If it's on off, you know, on the sidewalk or something like that, it becomes a public hazard. My question to that is, how come it sit there for over a week or so before it was removed? Oh, and code enforcement or they're in control of the vehicle abatement and the police department. So I don't know if the chief was aware of this or not. But they sent me a response to this and said, oh, we're gonna contact, we failed to be able to contact the owner. We're gonna send them a letter in the mail and we'll give them ten days to respond. As you see that picture, why should we wait ten days when this thing's in that street, that Blaker, you got children going to the junior high or the grade school up there, and then they're going to the high school down off of Service Road? And that's a busy street for kids walking and stuff every day to and from school. They shouldn't have to go around this beat up old wrecked thing. Who knows if there's sharp edges on it? But it's on the sidewalk. And if that doesn't constitute a public hazard, what does here in Series? No, that's all I got to say. I'd like to have a solution to this and why we have to wait so long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yegli. Is there any other members in the public that would like to make a comment? Yes, please. Please state your name.
I am Nadeva Hernandez. And I am here because I also heard of Erica Lopez. And it just hurts my heart that her family feels unheard. And the two times in my thirty-eight years of life where I needed the police department, I also felt unheard and not helped. And so I just hope it hits you guys in your heart to know that the community feels important. Not just one family, but various. Maybe it's time to educate these staff on empathy and on not sure what. But I hope her voice and her name is remembered. Maybe the next family will not feel unheard, but very much heard and very much helped.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Hernandez. I as well do not personally know a missing woman, but a mother of two kids. I teach my kids to look up and to respect these officers. And to know that they are there to help. And I myself, when I was younger, wanted to be a police officer. I actually was an EMT at a time. And one thing that we learned was I know that you guys see stuff every day. You guys, there's a difference between an ongoing investigation and empathy and compassion for the family. To somebody's sister, somebody's mom, somebody's wife, and ask the daughter, and ask the mother, and ask the wife. This hurt. And if it was my family, I would want them to know that the community stands behind them. I hope that they are heard and I hope that A, I receive empathy and the condolences that they deserve.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Please step up. If you have two, we'll go back to back.
Nick Maynard. I just wanted to clarify, Rick. They don't want a meeting about the ongoing investigation. They want a meeting with you about all the calls and the responses prior to confirming that she was deceased and prior to being found, so. You know, all the calls leading up to that is what they want to discuss with you. Obviously, the Modesto Police Department took over the investigation once she was found in Modesto. But it doesn't have anything to do with the investigation, so you should be able to have a meeting with them about that, I would think, right? But that didn't have anything to do with Modesto Police. All the calls to Series PD before Modesto took over the case had something to do with Modesto? Okay. Oh, I just wanted to clarify that because the meeting that they wanted doesn't have anything to do with the investigation that Modesto Police has, has to do with the calls, you know, prior to that of the stalker. Thank you.
No, thank you. The next person?
Good evening. My name is Erica, and I am also here in representation of Erica Lopez's family. Our biggest concern with Series PD is the negligence on their behalf as far as addressing our concerns. Prior to Erica going missing on Friday night, there had already been reports to Series PD about Erica being stalked and harassed by a certain individual. So our question is, why on Friday, when she was reported missing, why was the family told that we needed to still at that point wait a certain amount of hours, which I believe is about twenty-four hours, for anything to be put in action for there to be a search out for Erica? Twenty-four hours in some cases is too late. About twenty hours into Erica being missing, her body was found. And it was found by her family, not by Series PD, not by Modesto PD. It was found by her family and friends who were out looking for her body because there was negligence on both departments. Those are the answers we want. Why was there negligence when she was reported missing in danger? She's a mother, a young life lost, a person with a beautiful soul. Why? Why did we wait so long? There was already prior reports of somebody obviously looking to hurt her. Twenty-four hours, sometimes. We have to bend the rules a little bit. I understand there's protocols, but sometimes, protocols, we have to bypass that because there was already reports of her being in danger prior. Twenty, twenty hours into her being missing, her body was found again by her family and friends, not by any police department. They were the ones that called the police department to inform that her body was in a car in a parking lot.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Go ahead, sir. Oh, ma'am. Actually, unfortunately, if somebody can help him, it just needs to be on the record. Very much for understanding.
I just want to mention that we can support the family of Erica Lopez. I think we all just want to understand, you know, we all have families, kids, wives, husbands, whatever, you know? We all just want to understand, who do we go to in case of an emergency or, you know, I mean, we have to do everything ourselves or, you know, just like on this case, you know, family and friends had to go looking for for this person, you know? I think, I think we expect more, you know, from you guys, from the police station, from all the forces, you know, to help us more, you know, with cases like that. So like I said, I think we're just here for the same reason, you know, we just want to understand who do we go to in case of an emergency? And I mean, do we really, I mean, we call the police, but the police, you know, most cases, they all, you know, they all mentioned to us like, oh, you guys gotta wait this much time, this much time. And like, we can see, you know, sometimes we can't wait because, you know, bad things happen. You know what I mean? We're just here to, I guess we all just want to understand, you know, like, what's going on, you know, what, like, what happened? Hopefully, we can get some answers.
If you could please state your name, sir?
Adrian Vazquez.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was another hand, correct? Somebody else wanted to come up?
Hi, my name's Angela Huerta. I'm a member of the Series community here. I've been living in Series for about eleven years. I grew up in no man's land, which is otherwise north of Modesto, north of Series. And I came up to say a couple of comments on two different topics. The first one, Saturday morning, I became aware of Erica Lopez missing because I was outside in my yard. We were cleaning out our vehicle. And I live in a port and I noticed this car kept coming in. But the third time they came in, they stopped to talk to us. They were looking for this lady that's missing. I don't know her. And I thought, I don't know your vehicle, so can I help you? Distract. They had called the police the night before. She came there because her sister's phone was being pinged in my port. So I just want to know if the response can be looked at again because I listen to the scanner sometimes because I live very close to the freeway right here, Frenchage Road. And I see high-speed chases once to five times a week by Series Police Department. And I want to know if we can get the same urgency for missing people in our city. When they're letting you know there's somebody who's potentially looking to hurt another person and they are in fact missing, they are an adult, we understand that. We can't force people to do things. We can't make them come home. We get that part. And the community actually is very small here and everybody kind of knew about it and was looking through social media. I feel it's very important for everyone as a community to come together and come up with better response to situations like this, so we can be well informed. Like when you go to the doctor, you want to know what's going to happen before they give you a shot, right? I think it should be looked at for counselors to come out, behavioral health to come out to assess. They need, they need more assistance when there's a missing person report within those twenty-four hours to help the family get through what they're gonna go through. Because we don't know the outcome. The second part to my comment tonight is I come to you on behalf of a advocate for the homeless community in Stanislaus County. I am Director of St. Vincent de Paul Ministries for St. Stanislaus Church. I've been serving there twenty fourteen as a volunteer. Twenty sixteen, I became director. I've seen our community change a lot. In South Modesto, West Modesto, I've seen a lot. I worked at Mo's under the bridge. I used to close it at night. Seen a lot. I've smelled a lot. We need to do better for our community. There's people dying out there. I want to know if City of Series has funds to help the homeless in the City of Series. I understand they have at ordinance. I have questions, concerns, complaints. I've brought it up since twenty sixteen. I'd like to talk to somebody in regards to that. Very personal because I've gone through nineteen deaths. I let people die with dignity on the street. So that's why I came here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak? Go ahead, please come up. Please state your name.
My name is Amy Del Torre. I'm a Series community member in I-ten Central Valley High School. And I would like to ask a question of what are your protocols for someone who has reported harassment and has been dealing continuously in this case, reported missing? If you could, please give me an answer.
We actually, I didn't quite hear what the question was. Could you please speak closer to the microphone?
What are your protocols for someone who has reported harassment and has been dealing with this continuously? This case reported missing. If you could, please give me an answer.
Chief, is that a question you can answer here today? She was asking about protocol for missing persons. What is a protocol?
Yes, I understood the question and I'll reach out to the young lady and provide her that information after the meeting. If she can leave her name and information.
I just wanted to know because unimaginable things like the situation with Erica Lopez are unfortunately a reality for women. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Christina, did you get her name? Next person, if there's anyone else who would like to speak? Yeah, one more.
Hi, my name's Gabriela Ramirez, I attend Central Valley High School. I'm friends with Ursula Lopez and I personally knew Erica Lopez. I wanted to point out the absolute negligence of the Series Police Department in this case and the absolute lack of involvement.
Go ahead, take your time.
After multiple calls and complaints, there was nothing done, but a police report taken. There was video evidence on the harassment that Erica was. The Series Police Department had her location since eleven forty-five and did not notify her family or reply to the ten emails that Ursula Lopez had sent. If the Series Police Department have done the job, then she would still be here with us today. We wouldn't have had leave her daughter, son, and her husband. No. Because of the negligence of the Series Police Department, they no longer have her. I would like to ask the Chief of Police, what is going to be done about the situation and how justice will be served on behalf of your sake?
I believe he said that he would contact the family in the appropriate time. That'll be one of the questions that he will answer. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other persons that would like to come up to speak before I go on to Zoom? Seeing none? Oh, one more. Go ahead, ma'am. Please come up here and state your name. And I understand the microphone looks like it's a little bit too far. If you could bring the microphone a little bit closer yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Rosa Navarro, and my question for you is, I'm also here for the family of Erica Lopez. I don't know her, but my question is to you guys, to the Series Police. my question is to you guys, to the Series Police Department. Would it make a difference if it was your family member who this would have happened to? What would you guys have done in regards to that compared to someone else's that's not related to you guys? Would you guys have handled it different?
Unfortunately, I don't think that's a question that he should answer at the moment.
That was just my question to see if there would have been a difference between or would how that situation would have been handled.
Thank you very much. And before I move on to Zoom, just want to double check if there's anybody else that would like to make a comment. Seeing none. How many hands do we have raised on Zoom?
We have one hand raised on Zoom. Um, Jaime Curia.
One just popped up.
Cortez Sandoval, you are unmuted. Or if you could unmute your mic.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Jaime Curia. I'm calling on behalf of Erica Lopez. Uh, I'm formally requesting an internal investigation as to the reasoning and the actions or non-actions of the police department based on all the information that was given at the time, including, you know, protocol and just scenarios that are similar and the city normally conducts. That should be independently done. Of course, you guys have I IAs. The Supreme Court of the United States has never actually told a police department how to conduct or how to use their resources for proper reasons because only the police department knows the city and knows their resources and knows they the the best person to deal with is Chief Chief of Police. So they've never ruled on that. They've only ruled on Miranda rights and a couple of other uh things. However, if unless this is a complete, the facts reveal that this is a complete shock to the conscience of the community, a complete shock to the conscience, which means that it just goes beyond understanding. Then, you know, like, let's say they're having a birthday party for somebody and um the call comes in, it's missing, and it just gets late, then that shocks the conscience. But that's not what I'm referring to. So, what I, what I would like to I have heard other proponents for the Erica Lopez case and now now how the PD use their resources. The facts, the fact, the facts fade away. This will be Series, Series, Series greatest accomplishment. Please leave your liability at the door and work as one. Non-information as to the Modesto case prior to the meeting is crucial in their understanding, which was referred to by a speaker that information that happened before Modesto got involved is crucial and my comment is that this is a national-type case. You know, only proper actions will balance the community as one. Meaning, Series, the people, the attorney. I understand law because I am a law, I have, do have a law degree, but it is crucial that the City of Series come to one with this tragic ending. Um, how many more minutes do I have?
Yeah, one forty-seven.
Okay. I know a lot of questions can't be answered and they shouldn't be asked at this meeting because of seeing a lot of city council meetings and they're just not proper to be asked that question at the time. The meeting that is going to be conducted with the family should occur a lot sooner than just when this investigation is over is over because those facts and that information is lost. And I understand the daughter, who I'm not sure has spoken because I've logged in late, is now keeping a journal. If you guys want the journal copy, then those are facts that can be added to your internal investigation. So I request an internal investigation. And of course, it's because this is such a tragic event where there was a reported incident that had occurred the day before she disappeared. That's all I have. Thank you so much. I really, really wish to see Series and the community come as one in solving Erica Lopez's case along with the Deso PD. The Modesto PD has been uh non-commenting, but you guys have been really receptive to the feelings and the hurt by people. So I really appreciate you guys. This wasn't put on the agenda and that was actually
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvaro Zuniga, you may unmute your mic.
Thank you. Alvaro Zuniga, City of Series. Um, I was originally just gonna come and talk about the Neo Dog Park. Uh, and just comment and say that, uh, I believe it was Kim that went before the city council last week and spoke and said she would like to see a border party here for an event, a dog event next year. And actually, in in hindsight, you know, the whole park and the whole region here at Neo Park is uh is due for an actual physical, physical bathroom. If you come at this time, uh, you'll see that there's a bunch of families here, kids, adults, people with their dogs that are using uh these parks and and we could really use a facility to to use the restroom. Uh, that's that's that regarding the park. And um now that I hear um all this talk about safety, uh, I'm a little concerned because I I live on Puma Way and there is a house that has been condemned there since April and I believe it's been sitting condemned there uh for longer than that. I have seen police activity. Um, you know, I've seen homeless people in there and I'm scared that one of these days, you know, a fire is going to break out and it's going to affect uh properties that surround this condemned home. Um, when I submitted my complaint, uh, the response I got was that it was a duplicate complaint that they were already on it. Uh, so I'm just wondering uh how many, how many complaints it's gonna take and and I am also wondering if the city council, anybody there right now could give me an update as to what's what's going on with this house in Puma Way. And the last thing also, um, I I believe the city council is looking for input on design for uh on how to finish Rochelle Park. Uh, last week I submitted my my input to the city council, uh, to, I believe, three of you and the um city manager as well. I was wondering if you guys received that. It contained links, so I don't know if your spam folder, it went to spam or anything. But if I could just get an acknowledgement, like, hey, thanks for your input, um, it it would help the citizens a lot to to know that, you know, our emails aren't going to some void, because that's pretty much it that I have for today. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. We will make sure we take a look at the email and give you a response. Thank you. Do we have any other members on Zoom?
There's no uh, there's no hands raised on Zoom.
Did we receive any emails?
No emails received.
Public period is now closed. Moving on, there is no appointments to the boards. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like an item pull for further discussion?
Yes, like to remove eleven, thirteen, and fourteen's part of the consent.
And I would like to make a note that items number nine and thirteen are being pulled by staff. So if you could please go ahead and tell me those items that you said you want to go ahead and uh, items number nine and thirteen were already pulled by staff. And uh, what, go ahead, council member, what the other items were?
Eleven and
Eleven and twelve, okay.
And I don't know, fourteen's not part of consent.
That's new business, right? Yeah, is anybody else would like to, anybody other council member would like to pull the item? Okay, looking for a motion. Any members of the public that would like to open up, that would like to an item pulled from the agenda?
Consent calendar.
Excuse me, from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands on Zoom.
Looking for a motion?
Move to approve one through eight and ten on the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item number eleven, Councilmember Casey.
Four. We had this come forth previously and uh I'm one that recognize that audio needs to be a lot better. But I'm concerned that uh we approved something already and now we're going to do something again and uh we, why don't we wait and make sure that we're going to do something that's going to be final? Isn't isn't that what happened? I mean, previously, we approved the ARPA funds to be used to improve the audio here in this room. And I I think, I don't remember correctly, but I I think there's a question about it. And I I I do remember wanting to approve that. But now we're we're asking for additional funds and the upgrade and I'm wondering if two things. One, maybe we're not using the right company. Or is this actually going to be the final upgrade that we really need here?
Uh, Jim, we originally approved like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars-ish for complete remodel. And the staff came back asking for this thirty-five thousand-ish dollar figure just to improve the audio visual and not do any any improvements to the actual diocese. And that's now what we are being asked to approve. All of the stuff that the audio and visual and out there, speakers here, um, monitors, better microphones. So it's, we originally said they could spend up, we could spend up to a hundred and something thousand. Now we're just, they scaled it down. If you remember the last meeting they asked us for this, this was tabled for for a reason. I'm not sure why. Now they're just going final approval to spend the money to buy all the electronical, electronic and video equipment. And making sure it's clear that it's only thirty-something thousand, not the original one fifty that we approved.
Yeah, well, the the original one fifty was part of the program, the open public meeting, we various projects to use the ARPA money for, but it wasn't a final number.
Right. And when we go to actually spend the money, we have to prove it again. Just like number fourteen on on the agenda, we'll talk about in a minute. When the money is actually going to be spent, we have to prove that final amount before they can spend.
I guess maybe I'm making myself clear. Maybe I don't understand one or the other. We have already approved a dollar. Granted, during our public hearing, we said you can spend a hundred and fifty thousand. But then we, the number was brought back to it, said it's going to be whatever it was, fifty thousand. And now we're saying, well, the fifty's not enough, but it's still less than a hundred. My question is, is this the number? Are we, are we sure that this is the number? Are we going to have another resolution in October? Saying, well, no, now we need another twenty thousand.
So, uh, if I may jump in, um, so there was a total of a hundred ninety thousand dollars allocated to the clerk's office for various upgrades through the first round of ARPA. Of that hundred and ninety thousand, there was fifteen thousand for audiovisual upgrades. And there was a hundred fifty thousand for Council dais remodel, which also encompassed some audiovisual upgrades. Um, staff came to council August eighth and asked for us to use thirty-two thousand and change to go towards audiovisual upgrades, which exceeded the fifteen thousand. Um, during that council meeting with public comment and um conversation at the dais, um, there were other upgrades that staff felt needed to be made based on the concerns mentioned at that council meeting, which is why we're back in front of you today asking for an additional fifteen thousand and change. So, this additional um money will encompass adding TV monitors down uh that are, will be designated for the public because uh it was mentioned that they do have a hard time seeing the monitors um that are currently installed, which at the time that the monitors were installed for the audience, the audience was setting much for, much closer to those monitors. Since COVID, the audience has been pushed back for social distancing purposes. Um, and then also adding speakers that will be designated specifically for the dais. As it stands right now, there's only one speaker um for council members to hear the audience members or even executive staff. So that's why we're coming back asking for additional money. Um, and we do believe that this will um complete all audiovisual upgrades for the council chambers.
Okay, so just clarify, you know, before I became a council member and set up here, I used to sit back there against the wall. You couldn't hear half the things that were going on. So it wasn't difficult to make a decision, spend the money. My question is, is this going to solve the problem? Or are we leaving? Because we, because in a public hearing, we said, hey, why don't we allocate this money if needed, this, you know, to do some that's really the question is, is this going to finalize that head, you know, is this the same company that always you? And, you know, we, I can remember where we had to go to Zoom meetings because we had problems or meeting place. Uh, and that that was being managed by this same company. So, my reservation is to go ahead and approve this additional funds. And then are we going to come back and ask for more?
That's absolutely not the hope. The hope is that the upgrades that we'll be making will enhance uh council meetings for both the audience, for the council members, and for staff members attending. It is technology. There's always room for technology to fail. But I don't foresee that being an issue with these upgrades.
Thank you. No, Councilmember Klein, you had pushed the button a minute ago?
Hey, first, Alan, thank you very much for the explanation because I know that I did send you an email and questioned some of the the math, let's put it that way. So, and I and I understand Mr. Casey's, Councilmember Casey's concerns on this whole thing. Uh, so if we if we look at this whole thing, there was a hundred ninety thousand dollars in this one ARPA fund that we were going to spend. Twenty-five thousand dollars of it is for digital digitalizing historical mandated microfilm. Excuse me. Which left a hundred and sixty-five thousand for audiovisual and dia uh dais construction. Okay? We took that hundred fifty thousand, put it back in the ARPA funds. Okay? So with that, we left fifteen thousand dollars for council uh audio and camera upgrades. Came back to us in August and asked for thirty-two thousand dollars for it to uh do a better, better, you know, a different upgrade. Now you're looking for another fifteen thousand, which gives us sixty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars for the council chambers upgrades. With that being said, roughly as a hundred and sixty-five thousand, we're still putting the hundred, a hundred thousand dollars back into the ARPA funds. We're not using it to do the diocese. I understand Mr. Casey's concern because I know that a while back, you know, I did the same thing with the police department on body cameras. So, just to probably bring this out, are we getting a Ford Falcon model or are we getting a a GMC Cadillac model? A GMC Cadillac model? So if we're getting the Ford Falcon. Do we, are we gonna come back for upgrades? Like, not to put the PD in a bad spot, but when they first got the body cameras. We got body cameras that we can afford and use at the time. Couple of years later, you come back and you upgraded them, now they can be upgraded every year without having to repurchase body cameras. Am I correct? It's, it's, that's so, so the question is, is this gonna be good enough equipment? Where you're not saying, well, you know, I really should have bought the Cadillac model? Or is this equipment, if you use a consulting? Anybody in the consulting would tell you the difference and explain to you the, 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 the range of what you're getting. So we're not saying. Let's say in two years saying. Holy cow, we, we bought the wrong model. So. Just to elaborate. Have you used any kind of consulting or anybody else to help pick out the upgrades for the council chambers?
Well, staff has definitely utilized the audio visual contractor, and we do take his suggestions. He is the expert in that area as opposed to myself. So I do, I do weigh heavily what he says and what he suggests, I do ask questions as well, though. It was brought to my attention to look into a couple of other. Dais monitors, for example, which I did. It was, they were ruled out for various reasons, which I could go into. So it wasn't a blind yes, we'll take it, we'll sign on the dotted line. I also don't think it's the most elite luxury vehicle per se, but I do think that it's. You know, we're being fiscally conservative in what we're doing, but yet getting a good product that will last us long into the future.
So, the way I'm, where I'm taking it is, yes, you, you've consulted with the people, had a little input with other people. And. To the best of the knowledge and the best of the consultant that's driving you down the path, that. Currently, this is gonna be an upgrade from what we have. Which is going in a step in the right direction. And this is what we as a council all agree that we need a new system. I mean, that we can hear the audience, the audience can hear us a little better, so. I, I mean, from my standpoint. You also have to look at it, we have to start somewhere. And this is one of the few things you're gonna hear me say, but you have to, I'm gonna have to trust staff. That we're going in the right direction. So with that being said, and with Mr. Casey's concerns. I take it that you're not gonna come back to the council in three or four more weeks and say, well, we really need more money. Is that a safe assumption?
That, that would be a very safe assumption.
So this would be the last and final.
This is the last and final.
Okay, so that's just to play it out there.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate that. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Yeagley, go ahead, sir.
Gene Yeagley, serious. On this redoing of the PA system, you know, I'm not too concerned about the tables and chairs, but. Who else, anyway, maybe three or four that are here, it's very hard to hear, I know. City clerk or somebody said before, we were further up and we could hear better and see there, those things are too damn high. They should be lower. And the text, when they put up a diagram, I think, I don't know, it was Chris Hall, somebody. They need to be bigger, so even though we're back a little ways, if we move forward and later on, we can see these things, but it's too high constantly. Been in your neck, I've seen some people on the left hand side before, when they were looking at those over there trying to. You know, see what's going on. With this money being out, and this is the final time. From what Alex said. Who gets to check this? Is it one person? The city council gonna be here? What's the warranty period on this thing? Is there some guy in the city clerk or whoever was checking on this? Is there some time factor where? They're gonna have to upgrade this for it, is that in part of the contract? To have a new good system in here? I think, but the most important thing is, who's gonna check this? After it's in, somebody's gonna say, oh yeah, it's fixed now, and then we come in, or you come into a meeting here, and then we find out it's got quite a few flaws. There's a lot of ifs and ands, you know, the monies, I can understand the money, but what's underneath that money and what we get? What's the quality, what's the warranty? And, you know, how long that, will they fix this, is it one year, two years, three, five, whatever? That's what I'd like to know, and I think some other people would too, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Klein.
Mr. Yeagley. You know, I, I understand your concerns, but, you know, I'm looking at the positives. Because, you know, the audio visual in this building right now is. Fifteen years old. Okay? And we're upgrading. And, you know, there's times that people are at the podium, it's moved fifteen, twenty feet away from what it used to be. And at times, we can't hear anybody.
Oh, yeah.
So, I gotta look at it this way, we have to start somewhere, I think it's a positive. And I think this is going to go a long way. If one or two meetings down the road, we don't see that this, you know, fits our need, then. We're going to instruct the city manager. To hold the, the manuf, the, the people that bought, that sold us this accountable for not fitting our needs. But we have to, we have to start somewhere, and the only way to do it is trial and error. So I think that, you know, the city manager, you know, hopefully when this is put in. And that if it doesn't fit our needs within the first couple of meetings, that, that we get it taken care of.
Well, I, I didn't disagree with the extra money spent, and, and you brought that up too, that this was gonna be the final amount. I'm okay with that. Then, what I was concerned about, it's just what you were talking about at the end, was, you know, what's gonna happen to this system? What's the warranty period on it? What will they fix, what won't they fix? You know, is it, you know, it's not our fault, maybe somebody dropped something or did something. You know, what kind of warranty do we have with the time period, with the money that we're spending? And does anybody know from any other? I don't know, maybe this company's done stuff for other city councils in other cities. You know, have they contacted anybody to find out? Things from other people that's had systems put in by this company, not so much city council, but other systems that. Are broadcast kind of things, where it's very important for people to get their voice over. I haven't, again, I have no problem with the price, I just wanna know what we're getting. You know, has anybody checked it out? I'm sure Alex has somewhere along the line. And that's all I'm concerned about, I want the people to know what they're getting for the price. Now, this is a one time shot, we probably won't get this money again. No, thank you.
Well, I do know from previous experience that once this stuff is purchased, and the contract is brought, brought before the city. And it was brought before the council, it would be all part of the staff report, as far as warranty and the value and everything like that, so. You know, that will all be part of the staff report when, when we approve the. Expenditure.
Will that, how long will that be, another month or so?
That's gonna be up to the city when they turn around and take it to the, take it to the manufacturer and, and start drawing up the plans and the contract, and, you know, it could be. Three, four weeks from now, it could be two months from now. So, it, it should be all, all readily available in staff report as part of the, part of the contract.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Warren?
Thank you, I don't think anyone that has spoke upon this particular topic. Has any doubt that the upgrades are needed and the, the money needs to be spent. My thought, and I said this before, is. Why are we going the same apple tree and picking the same product from the same vendor? When the one we have right now doesn't work? West Coast Sound and Light will be the sole source. We're not going out to bid, we're not having two or three or four different. People in the business come into this facility and say, this is what you need. And this is how much it'll cost to give you the Cadillac model that you desire. We're going with one person, because that person knows this system. Well, if that person knew this system, we wouldn't have the problems that we have with it today. We need to go out to bid. Maybe somebody from San Jose or Fresno or Sacramento can come into this room. Say, hey, all of this stuff you have in here is junk, and it needs to go out the door. Don't keep adding to what you already have that is not adequate. To try to get something in the end that might work. And then after two or three meetings, we can tell the city manager, hey. We don't like it. Let's go out to bid, let's get some people in here that know this industry, that can look at this facility and tell us what we need. That's something that we really need to do. Not just give it to the same person who has been giving us what doesn't work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. State your name, sir.
Yes, my name is Eric Domin. What, what we're gonna have is. Instead of having these two screens. This whole thing can be like the, the whole drive-in, right, right here, the screen can be big. And then the speakers can be in a, can be in a back. Or if the people have a hard time for here, they can have their own Bluetooth. So instead of spending all their money, we check out the drive-in, how they had that, that they made the drive-in theater. And then you'll be way ahead of the game, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, we bring this back to council for a motion. Councilmember Casey? Right, sir.
So. Did, did we go? Just. Same comp?
We did not go out to bid, we are sole sourcing this project based on the knowledge that the existing consultant has with the. Infrastructure, the audio visual infrastructure of this room. And while we, he has been the one that's done past upgrades. They are quite old, and with technology. It, you know, however many years it's been in this room, it's time to do another upgrade.
You know. This week is my one year anniversary, being on the city council. When I came on, I thought I knew about, but I found out I knew nothing at all. So, and this is. Question I had. Isn't, is there a dollar amount? In the city policy? Where we spend something that we. Consider bidding?
The, the city's purchasing guidelines are outlined in the municipal code. I, without pulling municipal code, I, I don't have a dollar threshold memorized, I don't, I don't know if any one of the staff has that. That handy. But there, to answer the question, yes, there is a dollar threshold, the bidding process, the purchasing process is outlined in the municipal code.
But we're not sure we use this process, this project.
But we did use that process for this project, at this point, we're recommending a sole source.
So councilmember Casey, the sole source. Process is an exception to the procurement policy in which the law requires that you publicly bid certain types of projects. Not necessarily professional services, but construction projects definitely are required to go through a bidding process. So this falls under that category of not hitting, well, one, potentially not hitting a threshold, I can pull that up for you in a second. But the sole source really takes it out of those requirements. If you can make a finding that because of the nature of the service that you need, it justifies going with a specific vendor. So in this case, staff's presenting it to the council for consideration through a sole source. Because it's a vendor that is familiar with the systems that are already in place. And not necessarily having to go restart the, the process again, go with a different type of vendor. So that's the recommendation, it's really up to the council, if, if you wanna go off of that recommendation, but. The, again, the sole source is an exception to the general bidding rule.
Klein, you had your.
So with Mr. Warren's concern and Mr. Casey's concern. Okay, and the way I'm reading into this is. This is for the upgrades within the chambers. And I'm sort of reading into it that it's compatible with our control panel that we have in there, that does not have to be replaced. So that control panel alone costs us probably another fifty to seventy five thousand dollars. So that stays the same, so it's all a compatible system. So the question is, if you wanna go out to bid, then we have to turn around and think about upgrading our, changing our control panel in there. Possibly the wiring. You know, there's, there's all kinds of caveats, so, you know, I, I understand Mr. Warren's concern. But with, with going out and outsourcing it, going out to bid and not using a sole provider. We wanna turn around and spend possibly another hundred and fifty. Well, seventy five to eighty thousand dollars more, because we'd have to replace our control panel. That would be, that would be the question. And that's the way I'm, I'm taking it with the conversation I've had with Fallon and with Mr. Casey, you know, councilmember Casey's concern. And when we brought up, so. You know, you've got to determine what, what is viable. It takes something that's compatible with the units we already have, or have to upgrade the control panel and spend twice as much. At this time.
Councilmember Klein, so I found the code reference that talks about essentially sole source. And the finding, the, or the justification for going sole source is if you have supplies, services or equipment that are, are unique because of the quality, durability, availability or fitness for a particular use. Or are available from only one source, or if available from more than one source, bidding is not likely to result in the lowest price. So based off of those factors, as I believe staff is bringing it forward for that recommendation, using that, that sole source.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? Okay, Mr. Casey. Looking for a motion?
I moved, I moved to adopt. Item number eleven, resolution twenty twenty-two, one twenty-seven.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item number twelve, resolution number twenty twenty-two, one twenty-eight, authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional service contract with Wood Rogers Incorporated to perform professional planning services. Related to the preparation of the Cooper Trails master plan, including the creation of an environmental impact report in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And I believe you pulled this one.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke briefly with. Mr. Holmes prior to the meeting, and he's agreed to explain one more time. What this contract is really about. I, I understood it to be something different. I spoke to some of the people that live in the area, and. Anyway, Christopher, could you explain again?
All right, if I may, Mayor. This project is a master plan and EIR. The project here before you is not to approve the project, it's to approve us hiring a consultant. To help us with the, with the environmental impact report and the master plan, everything that goes along with it. So we're not approving the, the end project right now, we're only starting the project. And hiring this consultant to help us. The way it works is there's an applicant, in this case, it's two property owners that live in the project area. That are the project proponents, they're interested in this project, so they're willing to, to fund this effort. This, this is not being paid for out of the city's funds at all. But the way it works is they will, we will invoice them, and they'll give us a deposit of a hundred thousand dollars to start us off. Once we have the money, then we will start having Wood Rogers, the. Once we have the money, then we will start having Wood Rogers, the, the chosen consultant, help us and they'll start working. But only after we receive the money from the project applicant. As we get near, uh, using those funds, we will again ask for more money from the project applicant. And we will stop work with the consultant if we run out of funds. We assume that's not going to happen, but if it comes to that, then we will, we won't expend any work um, on the part of Wood Rogers, the consultant, unless we have the funds first. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the public? Warren?
Yes, thank you, council, and thank you, Christopher, because that's kind of one of the questions that I had. My other concern is the area that's north of Service Road in this project. And on the east side of Central Avenue. Are some older existing homes with areas that aren't up to standards where the city would want to annex them. Whether we did it today or we did it three years from now, or we did it fifty years from now. The only way I can see that the city would probably want to annex properties in that area if they were brought up to standards. With streets and curbs and gutters and lighting and all the other things that go along with, uh, annexing, uh, existing properties into the city limits. Also, where are, where is the city going to, uh, find the funding? Hire the extra police officers and the fire services and the public works department to take care of another six hundred and forty-eight acres annexed to the city down the road. Um, I understand you start somewhere and someone wants to put up a half a million dollars to do environmental impact report. My question is, why does the city have to be their checkbook? Why can't these people that want to do this go hire that consulting firm and say, hey, provide me with this information? And then later on, I can come back to the city. Why does the city have to be involved and spend city dollars in that involvement? That's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Klein, you have to answer to that question?
I was going to let Mr. Holmes answer that question.
Financing for, uh, public safety and everything else, uh, for that annex area is part of this effort. Having the financing plan in place, we want to make sure that all the city services are paid for. And so the city is not spending any money on this effort. The project proponent, the applicant will be funding this, uh, planning effort. Reason why we're hired, we're hiring the consultant to help us with this is because this master plan will become the city's master plan for this Copper Trails master plan area. Uh, we wanted to have that control of planning effort. So that's the, and that's typical. So that's, that's what happens, uh, throughout, uh, California when there's master plan. Uh, the, the city is in charge of that.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you catch that answer, Mr. Warren? It's, yeah, and it's, it's no, no expense to the city whatsoever.
Mayor, mayor, mayor.
Go ahead, move you.
Any public comment really should be back at the dais if there is.
Excuse me.
Sorry about that, Mr. Warren. I should have asked you to come up.
May I have permission?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Pardon me. While city staff is working on this and working with the E I R company, the consultant, and sending the bill along to the proponents, city staff is being paid by our city to do this work. Or are they deducting the amount of money or the hours that each department is using from that money from the consultant? Or from the, uh, from the applicant?
If I, if I may, because I had this same conversation, Mr. Holmes this morning, today, okay? So the way it works and the way the wording was in here and the reason I had a conversation with him is the city, the city says, this is the E I, E I R firm we want to use. Okay, that's the one we're going to use. So the developer says, okay. The city turns around and tells the developer, I need a hundred thousand dollars. Developer gives the city a hundred thousand dollars. They put it in a fund. Once the city receives that money, they go to the consulting firm and say, we have the deposit commenced, commenced putting your E I R document together. That guy, the consultant does the work, sends an invoice to the city. The city takes it out of that developer's fund that we have in, have in an escrow account and pays them. No money comes out of the city whatsoever. We're just like the bank. Where you deposit the money, then we spend it with, to, to the consultant. When that money gets low, the city turns around and tells the developer. Your money's low. You want to continue this? We need more money. In the meantime, the city tells the, the consultant. Funds are low, stop working. So it never comes out of the city's general fund, never comes out of the city's, uh, public works fund or anything like that. It's always in an escrow account within the city to pay, to pay for the, the work to be done. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes and no. I understand that part of it with the banker. We have the money coming in and it goes out to the, uh, to the, uh, consultant that's hired to do the E I R. And I understand the E I R effects and all that stuff that's supposed to, about how the city is going to come out in the end.
Mr. Warren, you have twenty-eight seconds.
My question is, who's paying for Christopher Holmes' time when he's doing all this work? Is the city billing and being, being paid back?
I believe he has the answer.
Uh, yes, we received an initial deposit, uh, for staff to start working on this project and we have been keeping track of our time um, against that deposit. And, um, as we need more money for city staff time to work on this project, we will continue to invoice the project applicant so that this project is fully paid for as we do typically with all projects.
Okay, that, that was my question. City staff time is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warren. Your time is up. Appreciate it. Any, any other member of the public that has a question? And council, I'm sorry, is there anybody on Zoom?
There's no hands on Zoom.
Bless you. And any more questions by the council? Okay, bring it back to the council.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion through item number twelve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Hi.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Moving on to unfinished business. Resolution number twenty-two, eighty-four, approving the use of American Rescue Plan Act. Funds to lease security cameras for select city parks and city yards and authorizing staff to move forward with this purchase. Questions from the council?
Sure, chief. My, my question, since I've been on the council, we have at least been reviewed. Most of the vandalism occurs at Ochoa Park. So this, this cameras over there. And, and to that question, uh, I share this with city manager. I've had the privilege taking my granddaughter to some golf tournament things in the city of Modesto Creekside. They have cameras and they, they clearly state that they're monitored twenty-four hours a day by the Modesto City Police. So. First question is, would Ochoa Park be part of the camera system? And the second question is, we have the staff already to monitor twenty-four hours a day?
The cameras will be put in Ochoa Park. That was added to this updated staff report and the cameras will be monitored twenty-four seven.
So we don't have to add staff? We already have the staff in.
Well, in a perfect world, we would have to add, add staff to take some of the pressure off of the dispatchers who will be monitoring these cameras twenty-four seven. But due to budget constraints, we do not have the staff to monitor these cameras twenty-four separate, twenty-four seven separately of dispatch.
Sure, and, and, and there is, it spells out the selected city park, city yard. All the parks or this certain park?
The parks that will be covered by cameras are River Bluff to include the Lower Bluff, Smarter Park to include the Skate Park and the City Yard. Rhodey Heights Park to include the tennis courts and the gazebo. Strawberry Fields Park, Whitmore Park to include the gazebo and Ochoa Park.
And the, and the cameras are going to cover the, the whole park or this area, certain area?
There is a, there was diagrams in the agenda packet that will show the exact areas of where the cameras are going to cover.
Yeah, funds that were already approved in this budget. Plenty of that, not going to be asking for more later and remind me. What is that dollar amount?
The updated dollar amount to complete this project totals six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty cents over a five-year period.
And I think during the, like hearing the first time this was heard, th- these are leased cameras and they're up. They're being leased, so the maintenance is taken care of.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, sorry, Alex, um, I don't want to disappoint the police chief, but I think you may have had a presentation.
You're not going to disappoint me at all.
Okay, and I, and at the pleasure of the council, but jumped right in question. Uh, again, at the pleasure of the council, if you'd like to proceed with questions, you can do that. But we, we do have, and I think we did have a, they shouldn't, I'll leave that to the council.
If you have a presentation, I'm okay with.
The presentation was going over the staff report. I do have El P D O from Epic I O on Zoom. If you had any questions for him, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Also, is everybody okay? We're good. Shay?
We're good.
Uh, anybody for public comment? Mr. Yekely, go ahead, step up, sir.
Yekely, serious. I understand the expenditure in all these different parks and those are probably legitimate park problems we have as ongoing. Damages that we receive a bill for every month. Like, the question I have is, should the atmosphere change? And we know that atmospheres change quite often with people doing things. It might be one part of the city. Do we have the other parks that are on, not on the list? Or they have the facilities to take from one area and go to the other and immediately hook them up within a, a short period of time?
Sam, being here to answer the questions for the, the buildings and the power and, and the infrastructure that would require that, I can't answer that question. Maybe Kevin can answer that question. My gut feelings suggest that if they can be put up, they can be taken down and moved to somewhere else.
In a pretty speedy time period, I went home.
I, I can't speak to that.
Oh, we hope. All right, is he going to make a comment?
Always you with the mic. Hello, would you like me to answer that, Mayor, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, the, uh, the ability to move the cameras is not going to be a, a quick, uh, one-hour trip. We have areas where we require power and if we have to have an electrician. And, uh, unless we, you know, plan for that, it's not planned to move them specifically at this point. My best of my knowledge that I've spoken with Stan about. But, uh, like, like Chief Collins says, it can be done. So. That's, that's the status of it right now.
Some areas seem like they got, and they would know the best police department activities and, and all the mayhem that goes on in the city. If we can, if all of a sudden the attention draws to some other area and more activity for a time period, then we need to get those over there. And I, I guess all the other parks have electricity. I don't know what it takes a pole or something. I don't know.
It's one of the challenges that we face. On, on Ochoa Park, we had the playground that was nearby one of our lights for our pump. And so we were able to install the camera location on that pole. So erecting a pole would be a requirement because it too would be vandalized if it was in, uh, you know, arm's length. So there are considerations that would have to be made, uh.
And, and that park with the last report stuff I read, it's, that's, that park, even though it's not finished, it's got continuous, uh, damage to the playground and stuff like that on their, their base. Uh, again, I hope we can solve this problem. So if we have to change them somewhere, that, uh, and we can do this. A, a need to stop this activity and, and get rid of these people. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Looks like we have a hand raised on Zoom.
Alvaro Zica, you can unmute your mic.
Hi, Alvaro. So, yes, city affairs. I am wondering, uh, if there was a bid, uh, for this job and, or are we going with the sole provider again?
If you want to answer that question.
This was a sole source provider.
Oh, okay, uh, yes, six, six hundred fifty thousand seems like, like a lot. Is there any option or any opportunity, chance that the council may open this up for bidding?
No, no, it's, it's, it's a sole provider. It's, we've already discussed that and this book came out with.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, we bring this back to the council. There's no additional questions? Council looking for a motion?
Move to adopt resolution twenty-two, eighty-four.
Second. All please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Is there any council member referrals today?
Nothing.
Um, go into reports. Uh, I do not have any reports. Council members, any reports?
Nothing.
Okay, city manager, for it, sir?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
City attorney?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Anyone from the department head? Being none, is the county, I'm sorry, was there a hand raised? I'm sorry. Got to be quick with that hand.
Hello? Yeah, this is a city engineer. I would like to report, uh, that we have a couple of surveys out for public, uh, uh, involvement and, uh, feedback. One is for, uh, Ochoa Park, uh, design. And the other one is for an A T P, uh, potential grant that we could actually take advantage of. And, uh, both of these surveys are to be completed, uh, by the middle of October. So I encourage the public to access our webpage. Look at the posters across town. There are places like in East Gate will have flyers put on doors. So looking for a lot of, uh, public participation in the survey, they will, can only help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have a comment, Christopher?
Yes, there's going to be a grand opening at the Starbucks at Series Gateway Center this Friday at nine-thirty a.m. They'll be open at four-thirty a.m., but we'll be doing the grand opening at nine-thirty a.m. this Friday. Also Cold Stone, um, opened today at the, um, Save Mart Shopping Center area. That was their soft opening. Their grand opening will be October eighth, Saturday at eleven a.m. And the ribbon cutting will be around one p.m. So we'll have that information to you in an email as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, did you have a question, sir?
Mayor, I've had one more announcement. The Ochoa Park Design Public Awareness Event will be handled onsite at the Ochoa Park uh, on October eighth, uh, from nine to twelve in the morning. And then again, on October twelfth, on a Wednesday night from five to seven p.m. And we invite all the public to, uh, meet us at Ochoa Park. And we invite all the public to uh meet us at Ochoa Park and uh we will receive uh input from a presentation. And again, please fill out the surveys uh and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have questions?
Recreation Department, unlike him, we have this veterans program banners. Brought one, maybe, do you have it still? Uh, anyway, I'd like to comment. He's done a great job working with the committee and the Pope. Uh, you know, more more to be heard, but we have thirty-one banners. Is that correct? Yeah. Good job.
Very much. Is the board of supervisors transconned it online or his office?
I don't see uh him or his office on Zoom.
And with that, uh, everybody have a blessed evening. This meeting is adjourned.